Oh, nice. Okay. I have to reopen my... There's an error.
At this time, I will call the meeting on the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To welcome everyone here this evening. We do have a full agenda before us this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item would be to consider the approval of the minutes from the work session as well as a regular council meeting. Both were held on November 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Don, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes of both as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Just a second here. Okay. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing will be on South First Street, Greeley Street, Williams Street reconstruction. We'll have a public hearing, and then following the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution that would order the improvement and the preparation of plans. So I will call on Jason Anderson to make a... To open the public hearing. He'll make a presentation, and then we'll open up for any public comment as part of the public hearing. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This project's included in the 2022 CIP for complete reconstruction of the street, curb, driveways, water, stormwater, and sanitary sewer systems. You can see the project limits up on the screen, extending on First Street from where we left off on the last First Street project near George up to Greeley. Greeley between College Drive and Saratoga, and then a one-block segment of Williams Street between George and Maple. This project was discussed by the PIT Committee on the November 22nd meeting. Residents were noticed... Notified of a public informational meeting that was held on December 7th in the evening. Project estimate is roughly $2.463 million, and that includes contingency and engineering costs. All improvements will be assessed in accordance with the current special assessment policy. If the city council decides to proceed with the project, you do have a resolution in front of you for preparing... Ordering the improvement and preparing the plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. We'll open up for any input, any questions as part of the public hearing, either from the council or from the audience. If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got it.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll then move to the resolution that would order the improvements and the preparation of the plans. Is there questions about the resolution? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number three. This is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the Halber Road reconstruction project, and similar to the last public hearing, our city engineer, director of Public Works, will conduct the public hearing. We'll give a short presentation, and then we'll open up if there is any public comment on this. Following that, we will consider the resolution. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This project is also included in our 2022 CIP for complete reconstruction. No water improvements on this particular project. Just street, curb, driveways, stormwater system, and sanitary sewer system improvements. Project limits include Halber Road between County Road 33 and Michigan Road. Staff is proposing a street width of roughly 38 feet wide, which is a reduction from the existing 43-feet-wide road section. The purpose of the narrowing is to reduce costs. This project was also discussed by the PIT Committee of the council on November 22nd, and property owners were also notified of an informational meeting that was held on the evening of December 7th. The engineer's estimate for this project currently sits at $1.462 million. That includes contingency and engineering costs. Once again, this will be assessed in accordance with the current special assessment policy. If the city council decides to proceed with the project, you do have the resolution for preparing... ordering the improvement and preparing the plans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. And we'll open up for any public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment I'd like to make just as a point of information is that previously, these projects, short of the public utilities work that would be done in this one stormwater, the rest of it would have been 100% assessable back to the property owners. And under our new assessment policy, that is not the case, and there's going to be a substantial amount of this that will be shared general fund from the city. So just want to remind that in these commercial projects, we have changed that assessment policy to hopefully make it a lot more reasonable to the property owners.
Thank you, Craig. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I just... Jason, we had at PIT some discussion about widths on this road, and I just... Can you refresh, you know, let the public know the different discussions we had about the width of this road for savings and for truck traffic?
Yes, we can do that, councilman. We approached the committee with a narrower section. Actually, we approached with a 36-foot-wide section with some wider driveways than were there today to help encourage the... Or allow the trucks to make their turns into the properties. After some discussion with the committee, we altered the design to be a 38.34 specifically width, which is a complete match of what we did on the other side of the highway and the other roads that were reconstructed around the Schwan's Properties, Superior, Michigan Road. So this would be a match of that section, also proposed to be concrete, very similar to that project in its entirety. But that was part of the discussion, is just making sure that we don't narrow too much, that we make it hard for the property owners to use it while also being cost-conscious and trying to minimize the width. So we landed on the 38-foot width. Does that summarize what you're...
It does, I believe, by making the 38-foot width and shrinking the driveways, we pass some more of the cost onto the city over the owners compared to what the assessment policy reads because we only pay so much for driveways. So we tried to help out the owners, property owners along there by making it a little wider so they're not paying the expense of their driveways. And, you know, Craig, you drive a big truck. I don't know how to get one out of those, and the 38 feet seems satisfactory to get a truck.
Yeah, they did. They did a lot of the layout work of the radiuses, both backing in and then pulling out in swings, and then the separation widths at the docks if there's a trailer drop there, if there's a tractor trailer drop. So they... I think the staff did a really good job of laying this out.
Yeah, so there's a lot of work behind the scenes put into this before it was brought to the public to save the property owners' money. I mean, we talked... I think you're part of that, too, Russ.
If I may add, we would be happy to meet with any property owners as well to go over turning movements on their properties. We have software that allows us to drop truck turning movements in and see how that lays out. So we're happy to go through that.
Any other input as part of this public hearing?
I have a question. There's a lot of that property that's undeveloped. So in the future, as someone wants to develop something in the property, will we assist them with putting aprons in with the first 12 feet as if it was a... If it was part of this project, or is that completely on their own to tie in?
The way it stands, it would be completely on their own.
Okay.
That's not included in... If it's included in our project, we participate. Otherwise, it's a driveway permit, and they carry that cost.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We said are existing that need to be replaced are the ones that we participate.
In our program. Yep. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? Now, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the public... Or close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the resolution that would order the improvement and the preparation of the plans for Halber Road.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, we'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are considered on the consent agenda.
Area number four.
Oh, okay. So we'll... Before we do that, we'll do number four. Thank you. Agenda item number four is consider the award of bids for the loader-mounted snowblower for the street department. Jason, we'll start. You can start this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The city marshal's street department operates two loader-mounted snow blowers that are most typically used for blowing wind road snow downtown or blowing back snow in drifting areas, maybe some parking lot applications. But these snow blowers are critical pieces of our snow removal infrastructure. They do experience significant duty time following snow events. We currently have a 1996 Snow Go unit and a 1976 Snow Go unit. The 2021 budget included $200,000 for the purchase of a replacement for the 1976 unit. So we would like to replace that with a 2021 Snow Go unit that is priced at $215,740 once we consider trade-in, because that is over the amount that we had allocated in the budget at 200,000. We did confirm with the finance office, our city finance department, that there is room for that in our capital budget because some other expenses have come in under budget, so they offset. So with that, we would entertain any questions of the council. I know Dean Kudrin is here from our street department, our superintendent. He's able to answer machine questions or any other questions that you have of the use of that equipment.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions?
I don't have a question. This... We had a lot of discussion at this at our committee meeting, and this is not the cheapest one that was bid out.
Right.
But we talked to Dean, and we used his expertise in checking with other users of the snow blowers, and they believe this is the best one for the money. You know, the one we're trading in is 48 years old. So I think the difference, Dean, it was about $15,000 between the second choice and this one. You spend $15,000 over 50 years. It doesn't take long in maintenance to make up that $15,000. Because like Dean said, we're going to have this thing 40... Well, hopefully 40 years again. So it is not the cheapest one, but we believe it is the best fit for our equipment in our city and getting what we need to have done. And I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that.
Thank you, Jim. Any other input from the council? Russ?
Mr. Mayor, that's one of the questions I had is that, as a council member, I would have liked to seen the breakdown of these bids. I'm not sure why they weren't included in our packet. And then my second question, Dean, do both of these blowers run at the same time?
A lot of the time they do.
Okay. But I would have liked to have seen a breakdown of bids.
Other input? Questions?
I just wanted to correct Jim's math. That 76 would only be 45 years, and I only know that because I got married a year earlier, and I know how many years I was married in. Just wanted... No offense, Jim, I just wanted to correct.
Your wife has paid way more than $15,000.
I totally agree.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. What's the wishes of the council?
I make a motion to approve the bid.
I second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. If we bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include consider the approval of the 2022 wage schedule for temporary and seasonal employees, consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce, consider the approval of the taxi cab license renewals, consider the approval of the various liquor licenses and tobacco license renewals, consider the approval of the 2022-2023 Healthcare Savings Plan Memorandum of Understanding, declare equipment surplus from the Parks Department, from the wastewater department of facilities improvement project. We have a payment invoice with Bolton and Mink. Consider some surplus items from the street department. Consider the resolution accepting additional coronavirus and local fiscal recovery funds. Consider the declaration or resolution decertifying tax increment financing District 1-12. Consider the reinstatement of the facade improvement program, the amendment of the ordinance regarding the parking regulations, the introduction of that ordinance, the introduction of the amendments and revisions to various ordinance sections, as well as the... Consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number five, please.
Number eight and 17.
Any other item?
If not, is there a motion to consider with the exception of 5, 8, and 17, the approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number five. Russ?
Yeah. Sheila, is this yours?
Jim, I'm sorry.
Well, and against the question I have, is looking at these wages and the current employment situation, are you going to get help? I just think it seems really low, not that I want to spend tax dollars. When I look at a lifeguard for $11, I could go work at McDonald's for 15 and not have to worry about saving lives. I mean, that's just the question I have. Are we going to be able to fill our positions?
This year, we did experience some issues filling some of the positions. For instance, the engineering aid, we were unable to fill that. Some of the positions, when we posted them, if we were low on applications or we had returning employees, we needed to start higher on the scale to meet the needs because, as you well know, they can go somewhere else in town and very likely get additional pay. But there were a couple of positions that were very difficult to fill this year. We tried to be flexible within the schedule that you've provided to us this year. We would ask for the same flexibility next year so that if we can't bring someone in at the minimum wage at 1050, we move up the scale so that we can hire into our positions.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheila. Any other questions for Sheila? I know this was also considered and discussed at the personnel committee.
And I guess I'd ask, what was their take on the wage scale? And I'm just curious.
Honestly, we had some of the same discussion. We did talk about... Quite a bit about, you know, are we going to be able to fill it? But on the other hand, we would as well suffer some significant wage compression because we've got... You know, there's a lot of services out there. And, yeah. But we basically had the same discussion and decided to move ahead with it.
Okay. So this recommendation provides the base that is compliant with the state minimum?
That's right.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number eight. Now, Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to... I'd like to talk about the liquor license fees. I believe our liquor stores are still operating, not even close to pre-pandemic what they were business-wise. I think they too are struggling for finding employees. If you talk to them, there's a lot... Number of them that are either closing early or not even opening up at earlier times in the day or whatever because they're having a employment issue, a problem. They can't find... They can't find help. And I think here, I think, you know, a couple of years ago, we gave them a break, and last year, I think we gave them another break after. But I think we're the... According to my recent documentation from Kyle, and this could be a couple of years old, we're the fourth highest in the comparable cities. And again, I think we need to take a look at these businesses. I'm not asking for them to give them a 50% break, but, you know, if we show them a good faith gesture on the city's part, as if we're not going to charge them $3,000 or whatever, we're going to give them a 10 or a 15 or a 20% discount this year. Because again, we have to recognize that they're not back on to pre-pandemic levels. I don't believe so anyway. And I just... The other thing I'd like to do is maybe... I don't think it's fair to have a taproom that's considerably less than what our local liquor stores are. I know it's a totally... Totally different type of liquor, but again, they're serving food out there. They're serving their beer that they manufacture right there, but there's a considerable difference in the cost. That's just my opinion. I'd like to see it... I'd like to see the council give some reduction for the liquor fees for the year. And again, I'm not looking at 50%. I'm looking at 10 to 20%. So that's my thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other input from the council?
Have we had feedback at all from our license holders? Is there... Are they expressing concerns?
I'll just comment that I visited with one owner downtown. I don't frequent these places that much, but I did recently, and he said he was having his best year ever.
I think our food and beverage sales tax reports bear that out, too, that they've recovered nicely.
Again, Mr. Mayor, along that take, and you even brought that up before, you know, sales taxes have been on an increase. But you know as well as Councilman Lozinski, the sales tax... Prices of goods have gone up, so your sales tax is going up automatically. I mean, Jim, what's the price of a 2x4 today compared to what it is a year ago?
It's actually down. I'll use the 2x4.
Four by each sheet of CDX or something, you know?
The price of stuff is down.
The cost of goods has gone up. The sales tax revenues are going to go up.
This is, you know, beverage.
Right.
Beverage taxes. This is a different tax.
We don't know if their costs have gone up, food and beverage.
No. I've had the same comment by an owner that Sharon has, that they're back to pre-pandemic levels or above. I'm not saying that what I found interesting in your conversation, and Kyle, you can comment on this. Are we really that high on our stuff compared to comparable cities?
Thank you, council member. The last time a report was compiled was for the Ways and Means Committee in 2018, 2019 to implement for 2020, so we could run another report to see where we're at. We were the... One of the highest. We were at 4,200, speaking specifically to the on-sale liquor license. That was reduced to 3,000. So we did reduce our fees by $1,200 that year. I would have to go back and look at that.
So to understand that when we're at 4,200, we were one of the highest.
Yes.
And we reduced it that time to 3,000.
Correct.
And we did not do a comparable since it's been reduced to 3,000.
Since 2018, 19, no, we have not.
So we did lower it by... That's over 25%.
Yep.
I do believe that one of the reasons that the license fees were increased back in that time was there was revenue that the state did not provide the city. There was unallotment. And I believe even union contracts were opened, and a way to subsidize the lost revenue was the city looked at fees, and instead of putting it all on property taxes, they looked at user fees, license fees, things like that. So I don't have all those details, but I do recall as part of that discussion on liquor license fees, we reviewed a memo and some action that was done around that time.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic?
Well, what I would like to do is I would make a motion to approve the fees as they are with us looking at a revision for 2023 fees, because it's hard to change it right now at this time. But I guess worth looking at it again to see where we're at. So I'd make a motion to approve as-is with us revisiting the fees for 2023.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion on that motion? I think the discussion would be that, you know, when the fee schedule is set, that's the time really to have this review, and then staff then can anticipate the revenue to incorporate into the 2023 budget.
Correct.
So... Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 17. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, and I'm not opposed to these revisions. My general question is, how do we enforce ordinances other than complaining?
It depends on the complaint or the ordinance, I suppose, councilman, but complaint basis is probably the strongest way we get enforcement because we don't have... We have a limited number of staff, so we really rely on folks bringing concerns to us to review against our ordinance.
And I can't think of a specific example, Jason, but say, for example, city staff is out doing something, and they notice something that could be considered out of... Out of compliance with an ordinance, could they bring it back to you or to somebody and do it that way?
In theory, yes. You know, I know historically, we've been a little tentative with that, but I know that the current council is having more conversations regarding that, and we're open... We're open ears.
And again, I just bring it up because we have lots and lots of ordinances, and I'm going to bring up dog waste on sidewalks, Steve. You know, if people continue to abuse the ordinance, and people are not going to report it because they're maybe going to be offended if their neighbors are going to get mad at them or whatever the case be, I don't know. But it doesn't make sense to have all these ordinances, in my opinion. I mean, we have tons and tons of ordinances, but, you know, they're not enforced, or they don't... Most of the time, they're not enforced. And I don't know how you go about doing that. I don't want to use it the right way, but, you know, I just bring it up.
Yeah, one good comment. The... I think the other thing to think about with ordinances is the... Just the general knowledge of the public. If the public understands what the rules are, and I know that the department, our engineering department or Public Works Department does periodic newsletters and, you know, informs the public, here's what the ordinance is, that's really the way that most ordinance are complied with, is by just general knowledge of the public, rather than a strict enforcement all the time, because we don't have the resources to do that enforcement. We really rely on the good faith of the public.
Okay.
John, and then Jim.
I just add in there and comment that somebody does call in, and anyone can call in. They are protected. They're... It's an anonymous complaint issued. The city bylaw cannot let their name out. So this is not something where, you know, if somebody is concerned, maybe a neighbor would get upset. Neighbors wouldn't find out who did it.
Let me use another... Excuse me for interrupting, but look at snow removal. If businesses are... I mean, it's against ordinance to put private property snow on city streets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, if the city crews would see that, can they contact X... Or contact you, and you would contact XYZ Business and say, hey, please don't push your snow on the public's street right away?
I think in the most egregious cases, that does happen right now. But I think that we use quite a bit of discretion with it because we don't want anyone to think that city staff is running around picking on certain individuals. So we're really careful about that. But, you know, I think we're hearing the conversation loud and clear, and we'll start to not ignore some of these things if they're in our face.
I don't want city staff to be the city police. But, I mean, it's just, you know, like maybe like the mayor's... maybe like the mayor said, an awareness to the public, said, I can't put my snow on the middle of the street, have the city crew haul it away.
You know, I think it was the mayor that mentioned our Public Works newsletter, which has been really helpful. It's a really quick and easy way to get some information across, and we can try to keep putting more ordinance things in there. The difficulty we have with that newsletter is outreach. It's all on the website. We do, city social media usually throws it out there, but we've stopped short of mailing it to everybody because that costs a lot of money. But we'll keep, keep, keep using the city website, I guess, is what I would tell the public, and what we can educate them on, is we're trying to make that more useful for them, and we try to keep it topical, so.
Thank you.
And Jim?
We, and Russ, we've had discussions in LNO about this. I mean, how do you enforce these? And Jason and I have had discussions about it. You know, besides having an ordinance pleased, it is tough because we don't want, and you use parking. There are cities that have parking enforcement. I don't think we want to add a parking enforcement department, because, I mean, you can, it may be, it actually may make revenue for the city. But it's one of these where we've had those discussions, that city staff, like you said, Jason, if it's staring us in the face, I think we directed through LNO, yeah, say something, but other, don't go looking for it.
And Judd?
Just as long as this topic is up for discussion, bring up a, a different aspect that's buried in here. And that's, you know, this is going to be a public hearing, and one of the items is about building numbers, street names, and go back to the discussion that's, that we did have at the time. There's a, a real need to get those numbers out there, and Quentin's out in the audience here, knows why. You know, if you have a fire, try to find a place, know the address, the emergency crew, whatever it is coming out, you know, that's something, on flip side of how do we enforce this, something that we're really asking the businesses and people to get those numbers out on their homes, on the front of the business, back of the business, where we've got alleys, you know, trying to get it, an ambulance in, try to figure out the right address. That's something to really, you know, be aware of. So a little bit maybe on the positive side of what we're trying to do here, rather than talking about how we're going to enforce it, which, yeah, it's another question, how are we going to enforce that. But this is something that really is necessary for businesses and people and residents to have their numbers out there. And my own thinking is probably a good project, if you've got a bunch of Boy Scouts or somebody else that wants to do something like that, maybe put a word out, let them think about doing something like that. So help us out in this area too, so. That's all.
That's a good example of one we talked about at LNO, that it's being enforced when you get a building permit. It's in the ordinance now, but you don't have to run out, where the city is not going to look for your address in back unless you pull a building permit. At that point, you have to bring it up to the current ordinance. It's in your best interest, and Quentin's best interest, to have those numbers in back. But the city is not going to go be the, the address police in the back of your building.
Right.
Craig?
But it's, you want to have it out there, so, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, and I appreciate this conversation, because I just had this recently also with some complaints that were brought up to me by individuals about primarily, and this one I'm going to pick on, on a couple of rental properties, but, you know, it's, we could, we all know, you know, there's a handful around, and it was bad renters with really bad habits and absentee landlords, and for whatever reason. And my frustration was, is, is that when I drove through the alley and looked at it, I know that city staff see it. And so I went in and I talked to our building officials about it, and, and actually, our head building official, and he, it was a great conversation, and I got a very satisfactory set of answer from him about, we have to be very careful about how we enforce those, and that we don't have our staff just focused on that, and that. And then, when he looked up the address, we're well into probably almost the final stage of bringing that into compliance. So it isn't that it fell off the radar, it's that everybody got due process and due time to take care of it. So I like that idea. My frustration is, is that we don't, and snow removal is probably the biggest one for me, is that we don't wait until the neighbors are so frustrated that they have to call and complain about it. And so I think the department that, the supervisory staff of the departments that would enforce it, if they see it, I think it's good to bring it forward. And that's a policy for leadership. I just want to put it out that this one council vote would support some type of, of a, a set of procedures that would not turn them into the, you know, kind of the city enforcement agents, but see something, say something, maybe on a higher level. But I think it's a really good conversation, because I don't want it to get to the point where, where neighbors are just angry at neighbors, especially in this day and age. I think we need to work to have a, more of a unified community.
Okay, thank you, Craig. The, so the action before us is introduction of this amendment, so if this does pass, it's coming back for conversation again, so.
Right.
I'd entertain a motion for the introduction.
So move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Nineteen, which is Consider the Acceptance of Donations to the Parks Department for Fiscal Year 2021, with us tonight is Preston Stensroot, our Parks Superintendent, to present the donations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we do kind of towards the end of the year of each fiscal year, to go through and kind of highlight some of the donations, that allowed us to do some items that probably maybe wouldn't have got done otherwise within the Parks Department. These are in no particular order, but I'll just kind of go through each, and if there's any questions about what, how it is used for, please feel free to ask. The Marshall Area Youth Baseball Association gave the city a donation for $15,000 for the purchase of fencing and the installation of new batting cages at Independence Park. The Marshall United Soccer Association gave $1,500 to be used towards the field renovations out at Channel Complex, or Channel Parkway, the complex there, that we took out the north two fields and halved in all that dirt, and got it seeded here this fall, so it should be good for soccer come spring or early summer, once it grows in good. The American Legion Post 113 donated $3,455 for the purchase and installation of a flagpole that'll go out in the Courtyard Plaza here at City Hall. We do have the pole in our possession, just waiting for location placement to install it. The American Legion Post 113 also gave $2,900 for a purchase and installation of flagpole at Justice Park. That's kind of one of the main parks that didn't have a flagpole yet, so now all of them will when we're done. The Marshall Area Crime Fund gave $3,442.16 for the purchase of security cameras to be installed in various locations at various parks. I think you guys are well aware of the vandalism issues we've had this year, and we now have approximately 70 cameras throughout our park system, and kind of filling in spots as we go, and finding areas we maybe didn't think about. So it's really cut down since, since we've installed them. So I think it'll be beneficial in the long term, so. And then, just kind of an update on the Veterans Memorial and Memorial Park, we received an additional $12,256 in donations this year, on top of 38 brick orders, which is not included in that 12,000. And those vary from 350 to $1,000 donations. And then, lastly, would be the cultivating the best in play. We've kind of came to council before and presented about installing inclusive playgrounds somewhere in one of our parks. That's kind of right when the pandemic hit and grants kind of went away. So this year, we kind of thought that maybe we should try adding inclusive playground components in each park, instead of having it all, all our eggs in one basket, per se, all at one park. So we reached out to some local clubs and associations, and we were able to get, I think we're at like 21,000 of the 35,000 donated. And we purchased a inclusive orbit, it's called. It's a wheelchair compliant merry-go-round. And then, an inclusive roller table, which is more of like sensory. So both of those pieces have been installed at Legion Field this fall, next to the new playground we put up last fall. And we installed synthetic turf, which is kind of the new coming thing. It's purely antimicrobial. It, you literally blow it off with the leaf blower, and that's all you have to do. There's no cleaning, it won't stain, it doesn't, it's maintenance-free, it should last for 20 years. So we're just, just under 35,000 to do all that. And with those donations, the Marshall Sunrise Rotary gave 6,000 this year, and is committed to another 6,000 for next year. Marshall Community Foundation awarded us a grant for $5,000. The Schnorr Family gave $5,000. Marshall Hy-Vee gave $5,000. The United Way of Southwest Minnesota gave 2,500. The Dykes Family 500. And then Hess Concrete did all the forming, pouring, leveling, and labor of the concrete at no cost. So I'm not sure the exact value of that, but it helped us out. So in total, we're somewhere around $62,500 for donations in the park, and just really grateful for the people that help us make our community better.
Well, thank you, Preston. The, we certainly appreciate the contributions for all those projects from all of those individuals and groups. We also appreciate the work, Preston, you have done in, in kind of coordinating and kind of communicating with these donors about what the needs are and coordinating the donations. So thank you. Any other input from the council? If not, is there a motion to accept the donations?
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Don, to accept the donations for the Parks Department for Fiscal Year 2021. Discussion on that motion?
Just a big thank you.
Yep.
Huge thank you.
Yes. If there's no other discussion, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And that motion does pass unanimous. Agenda item number 20 is Acceptance of Donations Made to the Marshall Fire Department in 2021. And with us tonight is Quentin Brunswick, Marshall Fire Chief. Quentin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you can see in your packet, there was seven significant donations. That was donated to, directly to the City of Marshall for equipment purchases within the City of Marshall. The first one was a $500 donation made by the Lake, Lake Marshall Township that was used, used toward the purchase of a new thermal, thermal imaging camera. A $150 donation from O'Reilly Auto Parts used for that same purpose. And two separate $1,000 donations for $2,000 total from a Marshall American Legion Post 113 that was used toward the purchase of a thermal imaging camera. That camera's about $7,500 total, so the rest of that came straight out of the, out of the Marshall Fire Department Relief Association, so it came as zero net impact to the tax levy. A $5,000 donation came from the Manjutholan BFW Post Number 742, right here in Marshall, toward the purchase of four new, four gas monitors. And a $1,000 donation came from MDU Resources or Minnesota-Dakota Utilities Resources Foundation, who's the owner of Great Plains Natural Gas, towards that same purchase. Those were ordered and put into place here last week. We did also purchase what's called a cradle that goes into the same system that's used by the chemical assessment team. So when they receive that, which was, came from the FSAC, or the Fire Service Safety Account or Fire Service Account, they'll, will receive this computer that'll be able to, this cradle plugged right into the side of that, so they can test and monitor all of, and bump test all of their monitors. We just bought the piece with donations to go right onto the side of that, so we're, we're grateful for that, to be able to do that, and we'll use that for any time anybody calls for any carbon monoxide detector activation, or we utilize it on the fire ground when we need to determine if we're going to wear our SCBAs or not, if it's alarming out for high CO alarms or SO2, or, or anything else. We obviously wear SCBAs to protect ourselves for that, too. A $6,825 donation that came from Archer, Archer Daniels Midland, or ADM, toward the purchase of new Elkhart brass nozzles and premium inch and three-quarter and two-and-a-half-inch anti-kinking fire hoses. We did a project this last year, we replaced all the hose on that. We did relay it all, and then we added new water appliances on there, too. So we went to all smooth bore nozzle application on that. That was about a $17,000 project, that the rest of that was funded by the Relief Association, so that also came as a net zero impact to the, to the tax levy for that. At the same time, it takes, it makes, it helps us be safer doing what we do, and in turn, hopefully, put more fires out faster. That's kind of the goal with that. The last donation here to be recognized, $7,212 donation from Flint Hills Resources. That's going to be used to purchase two new Elkhart brass ground monitors, is so we can apply more water faster without having to strain our staff while doing it. So we should be able to put on 500 gallons a minute minimum with each one of those, in the event we have a, a major event that needs a, a lot of water application on anything like that. And then, those have been ordered, but it's like 12 or 16 weeks out for those. So those will probably be, that will obviously be applied in 2022.
Quentin, that donation won't fully cover the purchase of those, will it?
It will, yes. Yeah, for two of them. So we actually only have one right now. I feel like we had a need to need way more than that. I'd like to put one on every one of our engines if we can. So that will get us up to having one on our primary engines. I'd like to have a few more, just in case, but they're about $3,500 apiece, so.
Are you approaching Magellan on that?
No, not really, but kind of in a roundabout way, we've had discussions about things like that. So just want the council to recognize the donations. We do appreciate our, these individuals and businesses that do contribute to the public safety of the City of Marshall.
Thank you, Quentin. And on behalf of the council, we certainly appreciate those businesses that are making these contributions, as well as similar to what my comments before. Appreciate your efforts in coordinating and making these donation possibilities possible, so.
Thank you.
I move we approve the acceptance of the donations made to the Marshall Fire Department for Fiscal 2021.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you once again. We'll move then to the Agenda Item Number 21, Consider the Approval of the Annual Contract Between the City of Marshall and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as we'll have the annual update from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. With us tonight is Director of the CVB, Cassie Weiss. Cassie.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. I do have a printed copy of our franchise. So I'll start first with just a review of Visit Marshall, and then go into the Red Baron second. So like Mayor said, I'm Cassie Weiss. I'm the Director for Visit Marshall. Some things we're going to talk about today, just a review of 2021, a review of Visit Marshall's financials, a goal recap of 2021, and then look at our 2022 goals, and then go into the Red Baron contract and the Red Baron in a, in review. So in 2021, we kind of focused in three major areas, which would be marketing. So in marketing, we focused on hunting events, and then just generic Visit Marshall ads that promote our local restaurants, coffee shops, businesses, all the amazing things that are here or there, there is to do in Marshall. We focused on events, so any events that our community were hosting, we were trying to help them, get them off the ground again, as COVID kind of has started to fade away and we can celebrate again. And then we focused on our community tourism support grant, which I talked a little bit last year about. But the purpose of this grant is just to provide financial investment for tourism projects in the area. So whether that's a sports tournament, a sports association, an event, and a group that wants to host a new event or a tourist attraction, we just really want to help those people or those groups bring more people to town and just have a bigger economic impact of our visitors, which would increase their spending, their hotel stays, their day visits, filling up with gas, stopping at restaurants, and then overall, just enhancing the quality of life for our Marshall residents as well. So groups that are eligible are sports associations, activity associations, events, local tourist attractions, and sports tournaments. And we really wanted to keep this a simple grant process, so it's just six questions that's on our website that they apply through, and our board approves the amount each month. This last year, we had 25 organizations apply, so we were really happy with that in our first year. We ended up donating over $11,000 in cash, and then doing $7,000 in in-kind marketing for them. So we were really hap- happy with that. And then in return, we just ask that they put our website on theirs, promote Visit Marshall's website, visit, we'll give them tour, visitor guides. So we just ask for a little bit in return. bit in return. Our financials, our direct spending is about 75% with 30% in marketing, 15% in events, and then 20% in that community support, which we're looking at upping a little bit because we had such good interaction with our local associations and groups with the community support. So we really want to keep, keep that up and be able to donate more money to them. And then 25% is about indirect spending, staffing, community, marketing, advertising, and then print materials like our visitor guide. So in 2021, when we talked, I had given you guys some goals that we had, I had set for the CBB. They are up there on the screen. The first two, we've, I just kind of talked about our tourism grant a little bit, but we feel like by getting those 25 people to apply for that grant that we met that goal. So we were really happy with that. And then being able to donate that much money to our local community to promote tourism, we felt like that really reached that goal there. And then strengthening our relationship with SMSU in that we provided the dorms with visitor guides. We worked with the admissions office on doing a bus tour around town to kind of teach their admissions department on what there is to do around the community, so when then they're giving tours, they can then give those kids that information. Our 2022 goals that we're looking at, we want to implement some more digital marketing into our 2022 marketing plan. We want to work with our community tourism grant applicants that are mostly for events to apply even further in advance so that we can do more regional marketing and be able to put more, you know, put them in more publications that would be at a larger area. We're going to assist the Line County Museum in opening an affiliate welcome center that's in conjunction with Explore Minnesota. And then we want to take that fam familiarized tour that we did with SMSU and develop that into a perk for our hospitality partners that would be at no charge to them. And then we want to continue to strengthen our relationship with SMSU because we do feel like they are a big part of tourism in this community. So we're focusing a little bit on the athletics department, working with training the coaches on the community for recruiting purposes, and then letting them know, or having them let us know when there's tournaments or camps in town that we can reach those people. And then we are working with the Center for International Education as well on a new event called World Fest that'll happen at the Red Baron in 2022. Any questions on Visit Marshall side of things?
Just curious on your digital marketing. Is that more in the social media side or some actual digital ads and billboards that we put around here or what?
Yeah, a little bit of both. So we do digital advertising on the billboard right now. We are going to do some search engine optimization to help boost our website and get more people there. And then we also are doing some online itineraries to boost some people to our website as well. So, and then we also will look at doing more social media ads. A lot of our social media ads we do right now are for our events through our in-kind donations.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Sorry. Can you go back? Okay, so now I'll talk about the Red Baron a little bit. So as you can see, 2021, we, early in the year, we still kind of had a little bit of a weird year, so it ended up working out really well with having the Ice Dogs in town. They stayed till April, and then as soon as they left, we hosted the home show. So we didn't have to lose any events to be able to host them a little bit longer, and we were able to keep the arena filled. So some of the new events that we hosted last year were the Taste of Marshall, the Pheasant Opener Bingo, the Fairbanks Ice Dog Season that happened January through April, and then we also just hosted an Ice Dogs game weekend last weekend. And then, as you can see as well, we did five weddings last year and we're booked to do seven right now in 2022. So 2021, one of our goals that we talked about was utilizing the meeting room and the vast clubroom for more community business meetings. We feel like we reached this goal by booking community COVID testing in the clubroom for the last two months. And then we've also booked a variety of other meetings in both meeting rooms. We also wanted to work with the NAHL on hosting an exhibition hockey game, and we actually were able to host a regular season game, so that was just two weekends ago. We had about 900 people each night to 1,000, complete sellout. It was a really, really awesome experience. And then we wanted to book more weddings as we saw more people starting to host again. And as you saw on the last side, we reached our high for next year of seven, so we're really excited about that. Our 2022 goals, we'd like to streamline the scheduling and booking process just to make it easier for the consumer. We'd like to develop a strategic plan for the Red Baron with long-term goals, and then we want to strengthen our relationship with our sponsors. So the Fairbanks Ice Dogs, I talked about them a little bit last year when I came, and then I think like a couple days later, we got shut down again, so they weren't able to play in 2020. But they ended up playing in January through April and hosted an additional 58 practice hours and 68 game hours. And then in December this year, this month, they hosted an additional 11 practice hours and eight game hours. So we suspect that was a community impact of over $750,000. We had visitors as far as Alaska, Colorado, Connecticut, Florida, Wisconsin, and then actually this December, I just got the report yesterday, we had someone from Winnipeg come down, so, pretty cool. Some of the marketing that we've been doing, I just put up some different examples of what we've done. So on the far left, there was an example of a listing in meeting pages. In the middle is a business spotlight in Connect Business Magazine. And then we've done ads in Connect Business Magazine, as well as created some different publications for meetings and weddings that we can hand out to people who would be interested. Any questions?
Questions? Just maybe a comment that I would have, and I appreciate this, is that while you guys have done just an absolute banner job with Red Baron Arena and Expo, I'd also want to recognize that you're actually working with that whole complex in promoting all the other MABA and the other youth activities. So while that's really kind of the, I guess, the gold centerpiece, I really appreciate all the work you've done with all of the, of the youth activities and all the fields and all the tournaments and things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Craig, on that note, I think that I can, as a board member sitting on that board, I can testify that Cassie or Adri are not letting any spider webs form underneath their feet by any means. They're, they're constantly on the go and they're constantly looking to expand things. And, and you know, I think Councilman, I don't want to say Lizinsky, but somebody said a while back that it's, it's just a hockey arena. No, it's becoming more than a hockey arena. And as people can see that there are more events being held out there, there, via weddings or via sports shows, one of the cases would be, there's more events that are being held in the facility. So it's a good thing for everybody. It's a good thing for, for restaurants, for hotels, for, for gas stations, and for Marshall in general, so, thank you, Cassie.
It was also nice to see the report that the Ice Dog players were participating with the elementary schools and reading to classes and things, so that was great, so.
That was fun.
Are you going to cover the contract or is Sharon doing that?
You can cover it.
Yeah. So not much changed on the contract, I think, other than the year. So same thing, 7,000 per year for all the things that we have been regularly doing, been doing.
And it's the recommendation of the CBB Board to renew the contract as recommend.
I have a question. Is it 7,000 per year or 7,000 per month?
Sorry, per month.
Yeah, it's both ways, because it has a fiscal impact of just $7,000, so that is not accurate on this.
That's correct.
So it's a fiscal impact of technically $94,000.
Eighty-four. Eighty-four.
Eighty-four thousand.
Your gonkulator's got a bad button tonight.
Well, how do you think I make money? Estimated.
Any other questions for Cassie? Thanks for the work that you do. Are there any questions about the contract? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion by Russ, seconded by Jim to approve the, the contract with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the Agenda Number 22, the Acceptance of the Minnesota DNR, preparing for Emerald Ash Bor grant for the Parks Department. Once again, I'll ask Preston Stensruh to come forward from the Parks Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, before us, we have a grant opportunity to help us get in better position for the eventual onset of Emerald Ash Bor in our community. Just some stats for you guys, now that we've completed our tree inventory. We inventoried 7,411 trees on city-owned property, and 1,832 of them are ash trees, making exactly 25%. Specifically in the parks, Independence Park has 636 trees and 198 are ash. Legion Field has 274, and 96 are ash. Freedom Park has 82 and 33 are ash. The softball complex on Channel Parkway has 62 trees and 46 are ash. And Victory Park has 59 trees and 35 are ash. Those are our highest populated parks, of course, like the new sports complex in Archery Park. Patriot Park have zero ash. So back in, I think it was August, I saw that this grant was available to help promote diversity in preparing for ash trees removal and replacing with new diverse trees in, in replacement. So I put in an application, and what we kind of came up with was we already have $10,000 that we kind of spent on tree maintenance stuff in the parks a year. So I just kind of went for, I think the most they awarded was 100,000. That was the max you could do. And I started kind of putting some numbers together for removals and planting of new trees, and came up with a kind of a project idea cost of $93,390 grant, which I then applied for. And we found out in September, I think, that we were awarded the grant should we choose to accept. With that comes, it's a 25% match, but it doesn't all have to be cash. So in the budget form of the document, I've included $8,960 for in-kind. That's what I feel it's going to take us in man-hours to plant new trees, to mulch, to water, that kind of stuff. So that, that counted towards part of our in-kind, or part of our match, but that part was in-kind. And then $15,090 of just a cash match, which I was hoping we would get this contract sooner so we could implement some of the 15,000 out of this year's budget, but we're kind of late to that. So I proposed that we would take that 15,000 out of the Parks budget next year, and I think it might even be in the budget on that. Yeah, for this match already, kind of. The city would incur all the costs upfront, and then we would fill out an expense claim back to the DNR, and then we would get a check for up to $93,390. If we go anything over, it would just be ours, so that's why I put the incidentals. If something comes up that we're just a little off, that's the most we'll get, so. So what we would do is take Independence, Legion, Freedom, the softball complex in Victory Park, our highest populated parks, and I have slated to do 96 tree removals and planting two new trees for every tree removed. And there would be a minimum of 1.5-inch caliper, but likely larger, like two-inch. We would hire a contractor, bid out to do all the removals, stumping. It'd have to be done during the winter when EAB is not active, even though we don't know that we have it here, just in case there's something that's been undetected. So we'd be kind of in that November to April timeframe. So we'd likely get started this coming winter on part of it, but we do have till 2023 to complete it. So if we didn't get done with all the removals, we could go into next winter. And then like June 30th is completed where all the trees that have to be out, all the trees planted, all the expenses incurred for full reimbursement. I would use our GIS from doing our inventory and mark the trees to be removed and likely put some kind of a white X on them or something, meet with contractors and take them around. It would also benefit the parks to do it during the winter because the ground will be frozen, so they should be able to just drive everywhere, and if they have to do some dirt work for seeding and filling in the spring, that would suffice, and all the heavy equipment should not be needed anymore, hopefully. So with that, I guess I would ask any questions, but recommending approval to help us get in the better spot for ash, or the Emerald Ash Bor, which I think was just last week's found in Redwood County now, too, so it's, it's getting closer.
Well, thank you, Preston. As you say, you know, it is moving closer, it is in Redwood County. And we know that when it does arrive, that it will be fatal to every one of those 25% trees that you have talked about or identified. So every green ash tree will, will succumb to Emerald Ash Bor when it does arrive here. So it makes good sense to be proactive and start getting a head start on replacing some of the trees and removing some of the trees so that it will be an easier transition when it does arrive. And this is an outstanding opportunity, and thanks for your work in, in preparing the application for this funding. Greg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Preston, what are you going to do with the trees, the ash trees as they're removed? Do they, can they, will they go out to our tree site and then taken care of there? Or do they have to be chipped and burned somewhere else, or how does it work?
We can go to our tree site now. However, I've had a few people, when we did the ash tree replacement plan, that called and said, like specifically, some of them at Legion Field are 24, 30-inch diameter that they would love to just have some of the, the logs, I'll call them. But I told them that from my point, we're going to bid it out, and once the contractor has it, if, you know, John Doe wants to work with contractor XYZ, and they're okay with that, then that's up to them. But we can haul it to the dump because we don't have Emerald Ash Bor. If we were a quarantine county, we'd have to do all of it on-site at each park, whether that's chipping, burning, something, it could not be hauled anywhere, so.
So these would be able to be moved out of Marshall? So say St. Paul Energy was looking for chips, they could come out and pay the contractor for the trees, chip them and haul them down there for energy?
I think so, because we're not quarantined.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, first of all, this is good that you got this in, and it's great, glad to see that help coming in. The worrisome part looking at is, you know, we've got seven, you're expecting about $750 per tree to move. You're talking 1,800 trees in Marshall? That's around a little over 1.3 million expense that's coming up.
That's just on city property, not counting any private property.
Just on city property, just looking at what it's potentially, the potential is for the cost of the city. Just thinking on that is, anywhere in the realm of possibility that we would acquire some equipment, lease, purchase to start doing some of these ourselves and using our own crew in wintertime, or is that?
I think the smaller ones, we could do quite easily. At this point, though, I don't think we want to go all in and just start cutting down ash trees that are, you know, eight-inch diameter that are good and healthy. We're going to focus on the, what I'm going to call the ones that are already naturally decaying because of their age, they're probably already a little bit of a liability and hazard, or they've maybe got broke half off in a storm, so they're not that aesthetically pleasing. So a combination of that. But Legion Field has a lot of trees that are really bad-looking and just old and rotting away. So I think this will be a good spot to get them taken out through the grant versus on our own, you know.
Are there any other questions for Preston? If not, is there a motion to accept the grant opportunity or?
I saw move.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Thanks, Preston.
We'll move then to Agenda Number 23. This is the Annual Truth and Taxation Public Meeting. The presenter will be Sharon Hansen, City Administrator. Sharon?
Okay. I think in the packet, there was a third.
I think in the packet there was a 30-slide presentation, but we shortened that up for tonight just to make the meeting flow a little quicker. And I'm just going to cover a few things really, really quick so that we have a refresher on where we are and what we're proposing for the final levy. We started meeting as a staff in June of this past year. And the Finance Department did a lot of the strategic meetings on that storm, led those, and Carla Drouin did the inputting. And then, of course, all of our division directors and supervisors put time into inputting this. The council had some meetings in July. A work session was held in August on the general levy budget. We did have a follow-up work session on, in the late November to arrive at our proposed final tax levy that you have in your packet tonight. Let's see. Do I have to point it somewhere?
You have to pose for the camera.
The purpose of the Truth and Taxation is to explain the proposed budget and the proposed tax levy for 2022 and obtain public feedback on the proposed city budget. Wrong way. This is a slide that Dave Parsons really likes. It's got a lot of data in there. But the key factor on this particular slide is, is that we're seeing a shift on tax capacity, market value to our residential units in the city of Marshall. And I highlighted one line item there with some red arrows, 6.5% to 7%. And Dave would want me to point out that we must keep in mind that these are values based on sales from October of 2019 to September 30th of 2020. So it's nearly two years, looking back. On average, he and his staff saw about a 10% increase in sales. We know what has occurred since then, of course, with some sales. So we're a little concerned about looking into 2023, but we'll see what happens when we get to that point. But an important distinction on shifting of values, and I'll have another slide that shows that. This is a really good slide to show that shifting. If you looked, and I intended to send this out, I did get some sample Truth and Taxation statements that the county did send out in November. You'll see if you look at commercial industrial property tax, Truth and Taxation statements, rather, most of them were flat in terms of value and smaller tax impacts in comparison to the residential. So here's a nice pie chart comparing 2021 to 2022. And good data here if you get asked on, you know, why is my property taxes going up? This is one indicator. It's not everything. There's a lot of other factors. One of the things we've talked about is market value exclusion. The higher your value of your home, the lower amount of exclusion. And so there's some other factors, but a nice, simple slide that shows again the shifting of values. We've all seen this particular chart. I do like to include it to refresh where do we stand in terms of our tax rate. We're right in the middle for our city tax rate when we compare with like cities. And when we look at our total tax rate, we're a little bit lower in comparison. Our Lyon County tax rate is relatively low and they do help lower the total tax rate. Tax capacity increase, we always like to look at rate of growth. So we went back to 2011. And average tax capacity growth since 2011 is 2.49%. Obviously, we always want that higher. But generally, as you look back through history, this is, this is kind of where we're at in 2022, close to the average. Our historical tax levy increase averaged since 2011 is 4.13. So a good talking point when it comes to tax levies is when you compare it with rate of growth, we're less than 2% impact between rate of growth and the tax levy. So typically, the full brunt of the tax levy increases is it's not percentage for percentage. It's going to be lower because we can offset some of the levy with the rate of growth. General Fund Levy, we've covered this before. I want to talk about real dollars instead of percentages. And for the General Fund Levy increase, it's about $282,000. When you look at a total budget of 14 million, that is not a lot of dollar increase. Let me also just kind of add again, if you get asked about the levy in the community, one of the things that we did not do for the 2022 levy is we didn't factor in inflation. Really, at the time, that was kind of an unknown. It probably still is as we go forward. But we've already seen some impacts. I know our Parks Department has had some looking into supplies of next year. Those are on the increase. The last snowfall that we had, snow crews were, street crews rather, were out. On Saturday morning, we did utilize private contractors to help move snow. Those costs have increased. So that's going to be a little concerning for 2022, 2023. And again, it's $282,000 increase for the General Fund. That's not a lot of dollars in terms of a $14 million total general levy budget. Debt Service Levy, I'm going to speak on behalf of Annette, who's done a lot of good analysis on debt reduction, debt forecasting. You know, this is one of those charts we'd really like to see it a little more flat, not so many ups and downs. There's another slide that'll show you street capital investment. That's one way we hope to kind of flatline this out. Obviously, on a given year, unknowns can happen, but if we can kind of predict the future with our capital improvement planning process, which we're getting a little bit better at, I will add, you know, this is a smaller item, but, you know, we had a public hearing tonight for two street reconstruction projects. Those usually didn't happen until well into the current year. So the street engineering department have really moved up some of their planning and it helps when the council does really good CIP planning and adopts a really good CIP plan. They can move forward. Why do we see a reduction capital improvement levy? We did obviously reduce this area because we have entered into an agreement with enterprise that meant less, less dollars in terms of vehicle purchases for 2022. I know that we're all evaluating that on a case-by-case, yearly basis, and we'll continue to do, do that regarding that particular agreement and see how it goes into the future. EDA levy, when we decided to go to a full-time EDA office, full-time staff person, we stated it would be additional impact on the levy. A couple of key points, we now have someone that works 40 hours plus, not in a shared position. And we are also ensuring that all the property tax dollars that are spent in this department remains in the community. It is not spent on a contracted service outside the community. That occurred for the first time in 2021. This is Annette Storm's work on trying to get some balance buildup for future debt reduction. And we'd like to have this actually higher than it is. But each year, when you go through the levy process, we want to find ways to lower the levy and kind of comfort that, that blow to the taxpayers. But we're building up this balance and, and we need to continue to do that. That did have an impact on our levy for 2022 as it did in the previous years. Just the share of our revenues, we like to characterize our share of revenues as a three-legged stool, local government aid, property taxes and non-property tax. The one thing I did not do prior to night is I wanted to do some comparison with previous years and with other communities. And that's something I will look at doing here in the future. But I do think, I mentioned this a couple of years ago, we are likely relying on the property tax a little bit more. Our local government aid has been relatively flat for a number of years. And if you look at inflation and the contribution the state makes, it's really been flat for a long period of time. We're way behind on it. And our state organizations will continue to lobby for that. You've seen some of the impacts for 2022. I don't really need to cover that. It's pretty self-explanatory and I mentioned some of them already. I showed this previously, preliminarily, cities, actually statewide, had higher preliminary levies in schools or counties. That's an indication of the cost of services that we provide. A street construction project isn't, for a city, is in no comparison to a county. It's just infrastructure, utilities, things like that, very, very expensive. So statewide, we were higher. And I did input some known levy amounts in red. Wilmer did adopt 20.2% levy increase and Worthington did as well, increased theirs. I did not find out the finals on the others. And I suspect Marshall will be that following our action tonight.
Sharon, do you know why Wilmer raised theirs to 20%?
They wanted to put some investment in streets, their street funds, and they also did set aside some funds for a future city hall project, although they don't have it defined on what that project will be and when. I do want to mention a little bit about the county because there has been two articles on levies for our local community, the county levy, which is relatively low percentage-wise, and our school district. So the county has twice the amount of levy as a city. So when you look at percentages, you really should look at real dollars. They get twice the amount of dollars when, when they have a percent increase. So I think that has value. We need to kind of explain to people why, why you just can't look at percentages. I've said earlier, county has a lot of expenses too, jails, human services, things like that. So I'm not disparaging where they're at, but just kind of pointing out, you just can't look at a percentage. I didn't include a slide on the school, but it was indicated by school personnel and also informed through our local newspaper. A program that's been really helpful for schools across the state is the ag credit program for farmland, when there's bonding. The state, through the tax calculation software, does a reduction on tax ag land. And that is made up on the backend by the state paying the school district. For 2022, the school district will offset the ag credit with about $650,000 of revenue. That does help their levy for 2022. Another slide that Dave composes for us, if we wanted to keep the tax rate flat, we would need to be at 3.02%. And he gives some numbers on that. And I think this is the last slide. This is to me probably the most important slide. In the upper right, it shows where, where is the 4.3% increase? We prior indicated the general levy doesn't have a lot of outside revenue. There's some fees in there and so forth. It is mainly funded by the property tax, so they're taking on the brunt of the levy increase. We did see, of course, capital go down and a little increase in street capital and a slight increase in the, in our debt service levy. Corner left, you'll see the levy increase and the capacity growth rates were at 1% in terms of, of the difference. And then to the right is what are the impacts? The average home value is about 150,000. So for the levy increase, 4.3%, it's a $9 increase. And I'll again speak on behalf of the Assessing Department, be cautious on the $9 because they're going to see a shift in value. So they may not see $9. It may be something else. This just shows the tax impact, not so much the, the value shifting. And then our commercial property, average commercial properties between 300 and 500,000. So a 30 to 60, $7 increase. And a lot of those values remain the same or slightly decreased. In your packet is three separate action items. It's the tax levy resolution, which according to statute, you adopt your levy, then you adopt your budget. That's a separate resolution in your packet. And then finally, we have a CIP. There was a brief discussion on November 23rd, kind of got cut off. We had additional staff meetings with that. We think we got a good plan. Some of those are still unknown going into 2022. And anytime we formalize a CIP, it's when we authorize bonding financing for those projects. So you'll have another crack at it coming in 2022. But it's good to kind of set forth somewhat of a template for, for CIP. So I'm going to pause, see if there's any questions, and then I can take my seat and you guys can take up the action or ask other questions of other staff.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Before we get into questions, you know, this is really the culmination of a lot of work, not only that the council was involved in, but especially staff led by you, Sharon, led by our Finance Department, specifically our Director of Administrative Services, Annette Storm, and all of the departments that really worked together in really coming up with this budget recommendation. So thank you all for all of that effort. Now we'll open up for any questions council may have before we proceed with the next agenda items.
Oh, I just have a few comments. I don't, I mean, we've been through this, I have a lot of questions. You know, I looked, as most people know, I'm not really in favor of tax increases. But as, as the staff works with this, 4.3% isn't awful and we have to ask ourselves, I've asked citizens, do you want us to cut services? Because that's the next step. And I'm going to use the example of the snowstorm. And Dean is his worst enemy because he does such a good job. You know, we had our snow moved in Marshall on, was it Friday? It was Friday or whatever. But it was moved by 2, 3 o'clock. The streets are done. There are cities that haven't even hit their side streets yet at that point, let alone if they even plow them. So the question to the taxpayers, and I've posed to them, we can keep, you know, we have in this levy, I think 70,000 for another street employee. So we can, we add streets, you got to add employees. Well, we could lower the tax levy. They said, well, what does that mean? Does it do to the services? So it may, it may slow them down. You know, I even used the example of street sweeping. I know we got two sweepers, but we get our streets cleaned very quickly. You go back to Minneapolis, I think they do it twice, twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. And you see the garbage in their streets, not to pick on Minneapolis, because it's a nice town. I was just in Lapperton today. Do we want salt on our streets? They don't salt their streets. And I slid right through stops and boom. So you know, it is, if we lower the levy, we're going to have to start cutting services. And I just want to make that point out there. And I've asked citizens, and they don't want their services cut. So it's, it's a choice. And I think that we're making the right choice at the 4.3% to keep services where they're at, yet keep the levy as low as we possibly can. So that's me on my soapbox tonight.
Jim, any other questions or comments?
I agree. All stated, Mr. Lizinski.
Thank you. I'll move us then to Agenda Item Number 24. This is the resolution that would adopt the tax levy for 2022. This was presented in the previous item.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to then the following item, the, consider the resolution that would adopt the budget for 2022, that of course would be supported by the previous item, the tax levy that was approved.
I approve adoption of the budget for 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? Not, we'll move to a vote. Not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And then the third item then would be agenda item number 26, consider approval of the five-year capital improvement plan.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add to that, this is flexible. This isn't locked in the place so the public knows that if something changes, this plan can change, this isn't locking us into this spending. But it gives the budgeting, the, um...
Guidance.
Guidance, the whatever department that works for finance. I knew it. Gives them guidance.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Steve.
So in, in, just talking about the previous two votes, just so the public knows, we've had a lot of working meetings on this budget, and we have hacked and talked and asked the staff to cut, cut, cut. And like Councilmember Lozinski said, this is, we are bare bones, anything more and we're going to start cutting services. The five-year capital improvement plan, we don't know what's going to happen in six months, much less five years, so it's, especially with COVID, it's a guess. So we're doing the best we can with what we have without the crystal ball that we need. So I just, you know, everybody will second guess us. We have done a lot of second guessing ourselves, and we've come up with the best ideas that we can come up with, and hopefully we can be successful as we navigate these uncharted waters going into the future.
And as you look at the public out there at this meeting, I'd say they must think we're doing a pretty good job because we only hear it when we're doing a bad job and there's nobody here. Well, there's one gentleman, I shouldn't say, and Doc. We got Doc.
Just a comment along the same line as Doc Meister had mentioned, you know, we started the work under the council, you know, summer, yeah, August. You know, the staff is the one that really did most of the work, and as we heard in the one meeting we had just before this meeting, some of that starts in March. I mean, people, you guys out there, and I'm looking at the staff at this point, have started doing this probably already next year, you know, in January, but, you know, March, April, May to get numbers into August, this is an ongoing thing. There is hours and hours of work that put into this thing. So it's, is just a big thank you to everyone out there.
Good. Any other discussion on the motion? Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the CIP, you know, I, here's a number of items that we've acted on this year based on supply chain, opportunities have come from suppliers, equipment needs, and especially the input and planning of our staff, starting with the two street sweepers. You know, that was a discussion that started a year and a half ago between Councilmember Lozinski, myself, and the street department about what are the pros and cons, and then looking at heavy equipment, the price of bonding or the value of bonding right now for larger, you know, are we smart to move some things around on the CIP? And we did. Looking at the snow blower that we, that we looked at and acted on tonight, you know, that's, how many years, Jim? 45 years old, right?
Forty-five, four, because he's been married for 46.
And so, you know, that's a testament to the fact that we don't throw things away, but then also look at opportunity where sometimes spending a little bit upfront or a little bit more upfront saves us a lot in the back end. And Dean and his folks did a lot of work researching to make that, that CIP plan, the five-year plan, solid, and then to act on it and to give us good input to be flexible. So when we are, we make good decisions, and the council committees that I sit on, those discussions are deep and solid. I mean, there's no, there's no rubber stamp in that process. There's a lot of work and a lot of input that goes into that. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate staff and the fact that while it doesn't always make everybody happy, we do get good community support, and I appreciate that, too.
Thank you, Craig. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll move us to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. At this time, I'll call for a five-minute recess.
I will reconvene the meeting. We are on agenda item number 27. This will be a presentation of the 2021 Community Park and Recreation Survey Results. Sharon, I'll have you start us out, and then we have a presenter.
Earlier this year, we heard presentation on our Aquatic Center. Of course, the council did move forward with securing an architect engineer. They have been working steadily. Another piece of this was discussion of financing and future options. And one of the goals was we wanted to ensure that the work that we were doing was going to be supported by the public. It helps with staff productivity not to be going down a path that the council or the public doesn't support. So we initiated the firm of Baker Tilly to conduct a community park and recreation survey. We asked a number of questions, and we do have a representative from Baker Tilly joining us via Zoom, Don Liftow, who headed up the project. And he can review some results with the council if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, welcome, Don. We can see you now.
Can you hear me now? Are you seeing the screen?
We are.
Yes, we are.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Sharon. It's a pleasure to be with you via Zoom. I told Sharon that I really enjoyed working on this particular project, partly because of working with Sharon and her staff, and partly because of connections to Marshall. My wife's grandfather was from Marshall and had the Struthers Arcade downtown. And her uncle was an O'Connell and had a car dealership. So I spent a lot of time in Marshall after I was married. With that as a brief introduction, I'm going to go through a PowerPoint giving you kind of high-level results of the recent community survey, which turned out to be very encouraging from our point of view. The methodology that we used included random sample, phone interviews with 303 registered voters living within the boundaries of the city. Interviews were done from early to mid-October, and the approximate margin of error is 5.5%. It would be easier if you rounded that off to five. And so if you see on a particular slide that 60% of the people said this, if you add five to that and subtract five to that, there's a 95% chance that the opinions of everybody in Marshall fall in that range. It's a very substantial number at 303. It might not seem like it, but when you hear on the news or on television, on the radio, about a national survey done of all registered voters in the United States, the average number of calls for those studies are about 1,250. So just think of 1,250 to the United States, to 303 to Marshall. We did have demographic targets that we identified. We wanted to be careful not to inadvertently sample way too many women versus men, or too many older people versus younger. We also looked at the geography of the city. At the end of the day, what we wanted to accomplish was to have the sample of 303 essentially mirror the demographics of everybody within the city, and we weren't able to accomplish that. These are the demographic targets that we focused on. When we were conducting the survey, we did keep track of how many were down on landlines versus cell phones, and whether people were homeowners or renters. Those were not targets, but we did keep track of them, and that information was provided to you in your reports. At the beginning of the survey, we included a demographic question related to how many times people have used the existing parks within the city in the last year. And you can see in the pie chart, if you start with that 11%, kind of up at 1:00 PM on the clock, when you move clockwise around, that goes from top to bottom in the information to the right. So 11% said none. As you move clockwise, 41% said 1 to 12 times, 9% 13 to 25 times. In a follow-up question, folks outside of the city of Marshall, and as you can see there, half of the respondents said none at all, and 40% said 1 to 12. So a little bit of use, but nothing significant. The main body of the survey asked voters their opinions about potential improvements to the city's parks, potential amenities to existing parks, and also some questions related to quality of life in Marshall and potential cooperative programs with the YMCA. How would you rate the parks and recreational facilities in Marshall? Here again, the starting at that 1 o'clock, 11%, moving clockwise, you can follow around to see that a little over half rated the parks excellent or good. Smaller percentages were critical, and about 1 out of 4 did not have an opinion. During the interview, we told people that the city is proposing to construct a new aquatic center and is considering some projects that would add to the current recreational The council wanted to know how people reacted to those ideas and to share their opinions about them. So as we went through the list, folks were told to tell us whether they'd be more likely or less likely to support each of these particular projects. So on this graph, as you can see, starting at the top with question seven in the interview and down to question 12. So there were questions that posed the possibility of doing these various projects. And in the horizontal line or bar chart, what you're seeing is the percentage. Who said, if I knew that part of the money would be used for additional walking and biking trails, 78% said I'd be more likely to support it, as compared to in the gray, 19% indicating that they'd be less likely to support that. So as you go from top to bottom, you can see all but the last two are over majority, and five of them are over 60%. So overall, the items that were tested in the survey did very, very well collectively. Just summarizing the previous slide, walking and biking trails, indoor play areas for children, lighting for baseball softball field had highest positive reaction, relatively lower positive reaction for pickleball and tennis courts. So the next section of the survey looked at potential for an outdoor ice rink project at Red Baron Arena. And so the information that was presented, you could see in the paragraph in the middle of the slide, folks were told that this potentially would be a cooperative project between the city and the Marshall Area Hockey Association. It'd be used from October through March for youth hockey, figure skating, as well as open skating for the public on weekends. So based on what you just heard, would you oppose or support that particular project? And as you can see, that had very, very strong support, with almost 3 out of 4 saying yes, and a much smaller percent opposing. Partnership with the YMCA, the city and the Marshall Area YMCA have been talking about some shared programs. I'm going to tell you during the phone interview some possible things that the city and YMCA might partner on in terms of sharing costs or management of the programs. And again, tell me whether you'd be supportive or opposed. So again, you can see all three that were tested were well above majority support, with the first two exceedingly higher than majority support. The gray again is the percent who indicated opposition to that particular idea. Good support for senior citizen programs and bowling, relatively lower support for laser tag arena, but generally still positive reaction. In terms of potential funding of park improvements, we tested two different funding options. One would be a property tax increase. And as you can see, the amounts tested were $80, $120, and $160 per year on an average-priced home. And we also tested funding through half-cent sales tax. When the property tax numbers were tested, those were done in random order, so that some people heard the $120 first, some people heard the $160 first. And we do that to avoid having the respondent anticipating that they're being, you know, taken up the hill or down the hill. So this is what it looked like with the funding options. You see the half-cent sales tax at the top. So that 74% that you're seeing is the combination of people who said, I would be much more supportive, knowing that's how the funding would be done. And that's combined with the folks who said I would be somewhat more supportive. So again, you're looking at 3 out of 4 generally liking that idea, that approach. And compared to funding projects with property tax increases, you can see that all three of the increases came in with support under 50%. We also included some statements for folks to react to related to how people view the parks and recreation facilities as an important part of the community and something that adds value to the community. So for the statements that we provided, we asked folks to tell us if they strongly agreed, agreed, disagreed, or strongly disagreed with each statement. Parks are important for the quality of life, 98% agreement. Quality parks attract people to live in Marshall, 92%. Quality parks encourages people to visit Marshall, 90%. So all three of these tested exceedingly strong in terms of the value of parks within the broader quality of life of a community. Very little disagreement with the importance of the parks, as noted on the previous slide. We also tested tax climate. We've done this hundreds of times using the probe that you're seeing on this particular slide. So folks are asked to listen to a statement, I would never vote for a tax increase, no matter what the amount or how the money raised would be used. And after hearing the statement, we asked people if they agreed or disagreed with that statement. And this was the results of that. And what we zero in on is the light green and the gray, which is the combination of people who strongly agree or agree with the statement. Remember that the statement was, I would not support any tax increase for any purpose in any amount. So you've got 17% agreeing with that statement. Over the years, when that's been tested in not only Minnesota but across the country, the normal percentage we see agreeing with that ranges from 15% to 25%. So the city of Marshall was at the low end of what we typically see, which is a good In terms of some summary findings, trail expansion, indoor play areas, baseball softball lighting, all had support at 70% plus. Pickleball and tennis courts were somewhat below 50%. And strong support for the idea of an outdoor ice sheet at Red Baron Arena, with 3/4 of respondents supporting that. Good support for partnerships on senior programs and the bowling facilities with the YMCA, somewhat lower support for the laser tag. In terms of the financing, very positive reaction to that half-cent sales tax funding projects at about 3 out of 4. And as I mentioned, all of the property tax increases tested below 50%. The tax aversion, as commented on the last slide, is positive, and at that low end of the range that we typically see. And that is it. Again, that is a high-level overview of the study that we did. You will eventually also have detailed results. And what I mean by detailed is for every question in the survey, you'll be able to see what people said, based on gender, age, where they live, household income, educational attainment, a variety of other demographic sorters. So you'll have that as a follow-up report, as well as a summary of the two open-ended questions that were included in the survey. So in summary, it was very positive from our point of view, and would seem to provide you with some options for moving forward with a good level of community support. So I'll stop there and see if there are questions.
Okay, thank you, Don. This also gives us a good basis for a lot of future planning and discussion. Sharon, any additional thing you wanted to add before we open it up for any questions?
Well, I have, I do want to talk about the future and how we go about the results. But while Don is still on Zoom, I want to comment on the open-ended questions we did ask. Is there something we didn't ask about that we should be offering? And as far as park and rec amenities, and the most common response was swimming pools and water parks. So we didn't specifically ask a question in the survey. We anticipated there would be support for the aquatic center and future pool project. So we didn't want to waste the number of questions on that. But when there was an open-ended questions, the respondents did comment on the need for swimming pools and water parks. So I think that's a really good indicator as well. So I don't know if Don wanted to add anything, if you had questions for Don. I do want to talk about, just real briefly too, future funding, scheduling, and process. But any other questions for Don?
Questions? Okay.
Okay. I don't know, Don, if you had another commitment, but thank you for your time, and you can certainly stay on or exit as to your wishes, so.
I do have another commitment, so I'll thank you again for the opportunity to help you, and good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real briefly, I did want to have Kyle show a slide. So what we, as indicated by the presentation, there seems to be some good support for sales tax extension. There's been some communication with our business community. There'll be more if there seems to be some support going forward. And we discussed earlier this year the potential of using a sales tax extension to fund the aquatic center. The new legislation that was adopted in 2019 by the state legislature allows park and recreation funding by the sales tax, and it also allows those seeking a sales tax authorization to list up to five projects. So we're not necessarily limited to just listing a sales tax extension request for just the aquatic center. Staff have been working diligently in the last, past several weeks on, you know, what is the capacity for the sales tax and how many projects could we fund with a sales tax over a period of time? I would argue we can do more than just the aquatic center, and the, I think this is a benefit to the way the legislature structured the new legislation. Each project that's listed can be voted up and down by the voters, so they could support one project and not support the other. And the amount of bonding and sales tax authorization would be adjusted to what was supported by the public. But the key thing I want to focus in on in next steps is, if the city council would like to pursue sales tax extension, we need to have the city council adopt a resolution proposing the tax. That resolution then needs to be submitted to the state legislature by January 31st. So between now and January 31st, we do need the council, if you so desire, to adopt a resolution seeking a sales tax extension. And then we'll work with the legislature past January 31st. If Kyle, if you could just go to the next slide too briefly, this was part of Don's presentation. What are some things that we could include in the sales tax authorization? We would likely use this slide for consideration. Preston and Scott and I have sat down and talked about some priority projects. And when we come forth with a resolution, we definitely want to get the council's feedback on some potential areas where we could fund park and recreation projects with the sales tax extension. Funding park and recreation projects with the sales tax alleviates the property tax burden that currently occurs with parks where we do, obviously, if you just adopted the levy and the budget, you know that there are some impacts. So this would shift it to a sales tax process or some of these projects. And certainly, I think we can argue it is a regional presence with Marshall and some of the facilities we have. So it would be a benefit to go through the sales tax process in terms of park and recreation funding. Let me also just kind of add that we're going to continue to communicate with our business community. I did previously present to the Downtown Business Council, rather, the Chamber Board, I should clarify myself, it was a board, the Chamber Board. I plan to talk to them again in December, and I'm going to meet individually with some key business folks on the sales tax extension. In addition to the salary or the survey results, some of the feedback we have received from the business community is, if it isn't increased, there would be support for it because of the past existing sales tax and how they're currently operating under that current provision or authorization. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on this. Not sure on the exact timing, but sometime before January 31st, we'd like to come back with a resolution. And hopefully by that time too, we'll have a better gauge on support from the business community and individuals. We're going to do some additional presentations. So any questions on that sales tax extension process or some of these projects?
Thank you, Sharon. Questions? Craig?
Yeah, so if I understand it right, if we move forward on this and got approval, when the new tax would kick on, we could go right to the back end of the current tax. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't do a half a percent, half a percent, it would be a continuation of the current.
Yeah, that's our goal with proposed legislations. Other communities have extended the sales tax seamlessly, so it didn't stop and then start again. We'd like to just kind of continue it on. Our goal with current funding is we would pay off Red Baron and Merritt in 2026. And we're still kind of working through some of those details, but initiate the extended sales tax 2027 or 2028.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Sharon. We'll move then with the remainder of the agenda tonight. The agenda item number 28, consider the approval of the RALCO storage building lease agreement early termination. This is a probably a good news story that the city was able to utilize property for its needs, to the point where now RALCO needs it for their economic development, and the city has other options for their storage needs, including storage of confiscated vehicles. So with that, Sharon?
We thought last year would be the last RALCO storage agreement we would have to bring to the council, but we did, were approach about vacating the storage unit on A Street early. We had originally planned to use it until the end of 2022. Obviously, the purchase of the MASH property helped facilitate us entertaining this request, and the timing of their request with the purchase of the MASH property lined up perfectly. It would be a refund revenue to the city of $52,000 and a pretty simplistic termination agreement before you to terminate the 2019 lease agreement that we entered into with RALCO.
Other questions about this termination agreement? We approve.
Second.
Motion by Craig, second by Jim. Discussion?
Sharon, just a question, the $52,000, would that go to offset the cost of the MASH property?
I know that there's some needs for fencing around some of the seized vehicles of the police department, so some of those funds may go towards that. I'm not sure it would equal $52,000, so hopefully some of that can offset the purchase of the MASH property.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
We have a voting here, it's a presentation.
Yeah.
Minnie Bark.
What's that?
Refresh it. Okay, there we're at.
All the votes in? So we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Two of you missing teeth.
Go ahead and enter your votes.
I voted twice, so that just got me a steal.
Early and often, yeah.
That's just confirmed by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion passes. Anything we need to do, Kyle, to clear that out?
I've taken care of it, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll move then to consider the authorization. We'll move then to consider the authorization approving the memorandum of agreement between the state of Minnesota and local governments authorizing the participation in the national opioid settlement. Sharon, do you have this?
So, our city attorney listened to a webinar last Friday on this particular item. He did prepare the documents previously. I think you were in attendance, too. The attorney general did present similar materials at the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities Conference, and indicated that he would like to see great participation among the counties and the cities. It would help build their, their, fund distribution back to counties and cities. The city attorney did detail the amount that they're looking at for distribution, which is $296 million.
Up, up to that amount, based upon participation by cities?
Yeah.
And that's, that's why they're trying to sweeten the pot a bit, get everybody involved.
So, previous discussions have, they had, did have a committee that talked about how these funds would be distributed. There was a lot of discussion, should cities of a certain side, size be included or not? There was a big push by counties to, to really collect the, the, the distribution because of their human service work that they do. But the league had representation as well. I know that the city attorney notes that it's 30, cities over 30,000 have a certain category, but there is opportunity for cities less than 30,000 to obtain funds. So the next step in this is to sign the memorandum of agreement that was put forth in the packet. The public safety director, Jim Marshall, has registered the city with the attorney general's office, and this is just the next step, in ensuring that we can possibly obtain some funds. And I don't know if the city attorney would like to add anything to that.
The comments from our, from, from Chief Marshall, we want to be able to play in the game. We can only play in the game to submit applications for grant proceeds, et cetera, if we participate by passing a resolution and signing on to the agreement.
I think the other thing that this represents, and we've heard this in the previous presentations from the attorney general, is that there's a very real desire to return or as much as funds as possible to where the need is the greatest, and that is locally. It's the, you know, it's our local law enforcement, it's our local healthcare providers that are really feeling the impact of the opioid epidemic, and that's, that's the intent of the resolution, is to be able to distribute those funds where, where that need is the greatest.
Right, and that's the 75%, 25% split. 75% of whatever fund is generated is to go back to the county level for distribution within each county, so.
Okay. Any questions about this resolution? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the mayor, public safety director to find, to sign the documents.
What's it by, John? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When you look at the numbers, I mean, it sounds great, and as a provider who has seen this opioid epidemic, if you look at the numbers, if they get $296 million, and you take what Lyon County is going to get at most, it's $858,000, and so, it's not a lot. Certainly better than nothing, but that's a poke in the eye, and I'm wondering how they get to that, because when you look at Lyon County, we have a halfway house, we have a lot of drug abuse. I just, again, I see most of it going into the cities, and proportional, they probably have a lot more, but it's, it would be nice to know how they come up with their percentages from the, from the distribution of this.
Good point, right. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, let's move to a vote. Close the voting? And the motion does pass.
Why are you not voting, Bob?
Refresh on your voting next time, to make sure you're on the right.
Bob is not playing.
You can still enter it, Mr. Mayor.
I voted yes.
Thank you. The, the one thing the gov, or the attorney general did stress, I think, this has to be done by January 2nd or January 3rd. I mean, you've got just a very small window of time, so thank you.
Okay. So we'll move then to the next agenda item. The, this is the agenda item number 30, Legion Field Stormwater Improvement Project Phase Two, Consider the Awarded Proposal to Bolton and Mink. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second project of three identified by Bolton and Mink with their 2019 Legion Field Stormwater Study. This project would propose, and we've got it shown up on the screen, it would propose some ponding, storage improvements on the north side of the railroad tracks, sort of opposite where the Buffalo Ridge concrete plant is located, directly adjacent to the Parkway 2 stormwater basin. This project would help manage some of the surface water runoff in that area on the south side of the tracks that was all developed years ago without requirement for their own storage. There is some significant flooding identified in this area. There is undersized piping that can handle the, the load, and this project is, is just a storage project, transmitting the water from the one side of the tracks to the other, storing it, and then discharging through the Parkway 2 basin. We're proposing to contract with Bolton and Mink for the design of this improvement. They gave us a scope that would be not to exceed amount of $27,500. We did discuss this with PIT, and if they have any comments, they can add them, but staff would propose to hire Bolton and Mink for this agreed amount, upon amount, to do this design.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
I have a question. I had actually a constituent call me, they just made the comment that Marshall seems to have a lot of ponds, and I didn't have an answer for him, so I said, well, I'll ask Jason. Do we have a high number of ponds because of the flood control project, or is this the new normal, or, I mean, I just, for an answer, I don't know if he's listening yet or not, but.
That's kind of a, thanks for the question, Councilman. That's kind of a difficult question to answer. Generally, sure, we have quite a few ponds. Is it abnormal? I, I don't think so. You know, with, with new development now, these are, these, these come with the territory to manage all the runoff that the paving creates. So, it is kind of the new normal. We are identifying areas to add them where it makes sense and where we can address an issue. We do see rainfall coming down in greater amounts in shorter time periods now than we did before. Not here to debate why that is, but that is statistically evident. So, the, the need to build these facilities is there.
And, and the requirement by Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for any land disturbance over an acre?
Sure. You know, the, all new development projects over an acre have to have their own management facilities in place. These older developments that didn't comply with those rules don't have them, and they have issues generally.
But the stormwater management really does, has nothing to do with the flood control project?
Correct.
And this would be a dry pond, I'm assuming?
Correct. Due to proximity to the airport, it'll be a dry pond. The, the diagram that you show there shows a tiled basin. We don't know exactly how we're going to do it yet, but it will be dry.
Don?
So, if we were a city in a different, how do I say, topographical location with better soils, say, no river, no lake in town, would we have to do these types of projects?
You would still have to do them, but it certainly is easier with a sandy or, or a better draining soil, because you can get away with a little more when the soil more readily takes the water away. Here, where we've got so much heavy clay, we do have to do a lot of things with, like, tile and different things like that. We can't infiltrate the water as well. We can only kind of try to control it and release it at the rate we want.
And Steve?
So, when we have all these ponds, for lack of a better word, how do we mitigate the mosquitoes out of them?
Well, with these dry basins, it's pretty easy, because they're supposed to be dry within 48 hours, but the wet ones, they just need to have enough moving water through them. You may see issues if we go through drought periods.
Craig?
I believe the other part of this is, I mean, the pond here is really not solving anything with the Parkway addition. It's really because of the things on the other side of the railroad tracks that we've been getting all the calls for, the poor drainage, the flooding. This is mitigating that. We're only giving, using Parkway as the outlet, and we're doing this so we don't overload Parkway. So by putting in that 16 acre feet, an acre foot will hold over 326,000 gallons, so you've got 326,000 gallons times 16 is what the flash flow hold will be for that, and that we're just doing it to mitigate a problem on the other side of the tracks.
Well, I hope my constituent was listening, because, boy, he got an answer. That's good, that's good.
That's turtology. That, that figure came from turtology.
I have no comment on that, Craig. Christmas season, I'll let it flow.
Checking his math, but I'll let it go.
It's actually 326,700 gallons, if you want to be precise.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to award the proposal for, from Bolton and Mink for the Legion Field Stormwater Improvements. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We close the voting?
There it is.
And the motion passes. Okay, we'll move then to agenda item number 31, Consider the Resolution Removing Parking Charles Avenue Between South Minnesota and South Hill, Portions of South Minnesota Streets, South Hill and South Whitney Street. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll break these into two pieces. I'll talk about the number one item first. There's Charles Avon Avenue between South Minnesota and South Hill. This is an area that city staff has been discussing for numerous years. There's quite a bit of parking historically on this block, largely due to the Avera Campus The road is fairly narrow. When you line the street with cars, it is a little bit tough to navigate, specifically with street maintenance equipment on our end. That's what we really noticed in this area. Avera's recently improved a nearby parking area, and there is support from their, their maintenance arm to, for this, to remove parking from the street, and encourage their employees to use the parking facilities that they have. So there's good support there. I would note that we did, we did reach out to the two property owners on Charles Avenue on the north side. We did hear back from one that just gave us the statement that they'd prefer to keep their parking on Charles Avenue, but beyond that, we hadn't heard any other, any, anything else. Staff would still recommend to, to have no parking here. We did take this to PIT, and would it be easier if I paused for any comments from PIT, or should we talk about the other one first?
Comments from Public Improvement Transportation Committee?
We support this, and I actually drove down this road today and thought, this is really tight. And I looked at the parking lot at the hospital, and it was empty. So it frustrates, because we've talked even about doing residential parking permits, and if the residents there bring up the parking issue, I think we need to look at that. I enjoy living close to the hospital, but since they've moved the clinic there, they have not been a good parking neighbor for the last three years, and Jason, you and I have had these conversations. And the people, the people will not move to the parking lot. So, I mean, it's, it's a tough situation, but I do support that we remove that parking. I do think at some point we explore residential parking permits, but Dr. Meister informs me the new clinic is opening up in a month. That should help alleviate some of that, so hopefully that alleviates that problem.
It'll alleviate a lot.
So, but I still do support this, because these are narrow streets.
Okay. And I, before I finish on that one, I will note that the two property owners on the north side do have access to the other streets, Minnesota and Hill. So we'll, we'll remove parking on Charles, but they have access on the other streets. So we're not completely taking away their on-street parking access.
They also have alley access, too.
That is correct, yeah. The other streets are Minnesota, Hill, and Whitney, up by College Drive, give or take 70 to 100 feet approximately. They're, they're all slightly different. We're proposing to remove parking from the intersection down to that 70 to 100 feet to the south. Purpose of that is to keep cars from parking, one, so close to the intersection, and, two, kind of prepare for the 2025 project where we're gonna, you see in the top drawing, we're proposing to bring the split median lanes together at the intersection to shorten the pedestrian crossings and make them line up better, and, and generally provide for a more safe intersection in our mind. So this better prepares us for that as well. On these streets, we do see quite a few cars parking in that area frequently. You know, we've heard concerns of it's, it's difficult for vehicles pulling trailers to negotiate the corners with all the cars there. Our street maintenance staff have a difficult time with all the cars up by the corner. So this would hopefully make an attempt to make that better. We did receive feedback. We, we sent notices out to the property owners that would be directly impacted, not the whole block, just the, the ones up in the no parking zone. And we did receive feedback from one property owner with a rental, and he was just concerned with taking away that parking there and how it may move it down the block. So, with that, I think I could turn it over to PIT if they had any comments also.
I received the same call for that homeowner, and him and I had an extensive conversation. And I said, Jeff, have them park them back. You got a double car garage, alley access. And I said, it's no different than we remove parking from Main Streets, an adjustment, but that was about five, six years ago, we eliminated parking on Main Street, and it's worked well. So, and it is, that corner, I cannot, with the car parked there, I cannot turn my truck onto that corner without hitting the boulevard. So I think it is a good move, and I think PIT supports it. Don, shake his head, too, because I know he has to turn onto those streets.
Well, I, I live on South Hill, and, yeah, when you turn off of College Drive onto Hill, there's a parked car on the corner, it's difficult. You're right.
I'm surprised nobody's taken out that gas. There's a gas.
Yeah.
I'm surprised nobody's ever taken that out, honestly.
Other input?
Jason, the only question I had from a constituent was on the median on Charles and Hill there, there's a couple of evergreen trees that are, they, they said, dead. They probably should be removed. I mean, hasn't anything to do with the parking or anything else, but they just said, why doesn't the city take those trees down? So, I know, trees are trees, but I think those evergreen trees probably could go.
We can, we can review that. Yeah, we'll do that, Councilman.
And Russ, you can let, no, I know that the candy man up here, Steve Klein, had some removed. I believe the city came in and put in some nice.
Yep.
Other trees, so, I think you visit with, have them visit with Jason or Preston.
Yep.
So, yes, it's the candy, Steve Klein.
Steve.
The candy man.
John? Fudge. Just kind of a question, and goes along in line with what Jim was talking about, use of the, the alleys, and, you know, instead of parking out on the street, parking the alley. Do we require that there be a cement platform back there, or a concrete platform for parking, or can they make a gravel parking area back there? Because I know the whole, the, the alleyway is gravelled, so.
I'm thinking that there's no requirement, but I would need to review that.
I think you're correct.
And the, and the, the only thing I'm thinking of is in the event of a rental, if there's something written in there about required parking, but I, I don't think so.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's difficulties in parking, and I think you're right, you know, you said, if we block that first several feet of the parking, some of them are going to just move down the street unless it's more inconvenient to do that than to go park in the back, and basically, you know, some of those locations that we've been talking about have got the space available to make additional parking if needed, but they do have, you know, there's quite a few double parking pads back there, and some pretty good area, so did the same thing, kind of just driving through the alleyways and taking a look there. But, you know, if they wanted to, they could actually just turn some of it back to gravel and, you know, put extra parking alongside them. Okay.
Other input? Jason, you, do you want this one motion or two motions? I believe we could handle it one, but.
I think one motion would be fine.
I'll make that motion, as long as it's one.
By Jim, seconded by Russ. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting? And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 32, Consider Appointments to Various City Boards, Commissions, Authorities. Earlier this evening, with a council meeting and special session interviewed applicants, and based on that. And based on that meeting, as well as a meeting held two weeks prior, a special meeting, I would recommend that Linda Bond be appointed to an unexpired term on the library board. That term would expire December 31, 2024. That Derek Deitz be appointed to an unexpired term on the planning commission for a term that will expire May 31, 2024. And that Dean Knudsen would be appointed to the Public Housing Commission for a non-expired term that will expire May 31, 2023. I'd offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm.
We'll move.
Second.
By Don, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting? And the motion passes. Agenda number 33, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Because of the length of this meeting and the hour, I'll keep my report very brief. The Regional Development Commission did have their monthly meeting this past Thursday evening. Kind of a year-end, calendar year-end business meeting. Prior to that, the previous week, there was a District Eight and that Area Transportation Partnership Meeting. I represent the Southwest Regional Development Commission on the District ATP, and they did have their meeting. And Jason, you were also in attendance at that meeting. The MINDOT continues to meet by distance using Microsoft Meets. The the bulk of that meeting was the presentation of the recommendations for the selection criteria for the upcoming Corridors of Commerce program, which was funded by $200 million from the legislature this last year. But also the requirement that MINDOT come back with a selection requirement. So that was reviewed and what the recommendations going to the legislature will be. If the recommendations hold, that in MINDOT District Eight, that would provide the possibility of funding because there is statewide competitiveness. But for Highway 23, Highway 212, and I believe Highway 22 in McLeod County, those are the only three interregional corridors that would be eligible for corridors of commerce. Craig?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Don? John?
Utility meets next week, and EDA meets tomorrow.
Russ?
We had the presentation from CVB this evening. Library Board met, and we discussed some of the issues that came up there. One thing that maybe we want to have Sheila check on was Juneteenth is a new federal holiday, but it falls on, I believe, Sunday. So the state was not recognizing it yet for this year, so.
We don't, we follow the state-recognized holidays, and I think any addition, additional holidays would be a union negotiation item.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
I have nothing.
Let's move then to the next agenda item, Councilmember Individual Items. Craig?
We discussed the only thing I had, and that was about the complaints on properties and how we manage those. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I had a constituent ask me about putting a light up in the dog park so they could use it earlier and later, and I thought, that's a pretty good idea. So might want to mention that to Preston and.
Scott's Scott's in the back row.
Light up at the dog park.
If I remember correctly, the dog park was built off of donations at the time, wasn't it, for the majority of it? So I think it'd be a good thing to tell the constituent, not not that we won't do it, but tell them, help us raise money because our budget is tight. And that tells me all the time, our budget is tight.
You had a cat park, would you let us put a light in there then?
Really careless and put like. Just a suggestion.
Filter out if you don't like dogs or.
But I know that was fully built, I believe it was fully built by by donations, if I remember correctly.
There was a combination, that was a stormwater project, too, so. Don?
Yeah, I, a while back, had a constituent ask me about the the liquor feeding well, and I guess we've resolved that tonight by, you know, going to take a look at it for the next fiscal year. We'll just leave it at that.
Jim?
I have a couple of things. I received a letter from Mr. Taylor, and I respect him because he signed his letter, and I appreciate this, I read it. And it involved a property on East Main Street. And I think with his letter, it was spot on. I believe everybody on the council got it. I believe it's 509 East Main Street. You did not? Well, here it is, you guys can read it. It's a very, he did, it's a nice letter, it's nothing. But I agree with him. He was just saying, this property has been empty and vacant since 1989. I remember when, it's Ruth Menantini, I remember when she passed away even, and I was young back then.
Do math.
I won't do the math. But he is correct that I think if we got on top of these properties, and Craig, you brought it up sooner, like he said, if we've been on top of the trailer court maybe 10 years ago, we wouldn't have the issues we're having now. This is somebody who will probably fix our property up. He stuck over 12,002 or 3 years ago putting a new roof on it. So I think if we get into contact with the gentleman, because it's still owned by that family, I mean, the the young gentleman who acquired the house still owns it. I think he lives in Iowa.
That I. South Dakota, and he has been contacted previously and recently.
Okay, so this is being worked on, and we, if we gotta go to legal steps on it, I think he will do stuff. So I agree with Greg. This has been floating out there since, well, this house has looked bad for 20 years. He did finally put a roof on it. So I just, I I wanted to bring that up. And Greg, Greg, if you haven't seen the letter, Dennis, they can pass it down. I.
I've seen it, but I, what do you want staff to do?
What I, that if if this is.
We've sent notices out. We do not have the authority to go onto private property. Do you want us going onto private property to repair everything that we see or everything that's brought to our attention?
If there's a legal remedy, then I think that we need to start pursuing those legal remedies. I mean, if this has been floating out there for 10 years, that's a long time.
No, it's been.
This house has been in bad shape for 15 years.
Totally, they put a new roof on it three years ago.
Yeah, but the house is still missing windows, it's missing paint, it has trees. This house, and he's correct, is an ice around the Main Street. I've known this house has been in bad shape. I grew grew up across it. My parents look at this house on a daily basis. It is in bad shape and is not hiding. It's one of these, like Craig, you would say, is not hiding.
No, it's right there.
So if we gotta step up our game and not be afraid to litigate, maybe that's what we need to do. So, you know, it's just something that we need to start addressing these, and I think we can stop some of the other issues, you know, further on. Second question is a question I have for you, Jason. And I'm just looking for an answer. On Friday or Thursday, it was snowing out, we had about two inches of snow on the road. I saw a salt truck go by and drop salt on the snow. And maybe there's a reason for it. I'm just, you know, as we talk budgets, this and that. Is there, is there a reason that we're dumping salt on two inches of snow before we plow the streets? I mean, there maybe is a chemical reason. I don't know. Or Dean?
Yes, Doug, you got me.
Okay, because I just looked, it's like, this doesn't, to me, it didn't make sense, but.
Normally, you don't plow anything over less than two inches. That was what the policy was some time ago.
No, I was wondering why there's salted on top of the snow in the middle of a snowstorm.
Well, if you want a slippery intersection.
But there was two.
Plow it and salt it or just salt it?
It was two and a half inches of snow on top of it, the salt didn't do anything.
Because the salt will melt, the salt will turn wet under the snow, and it'll melt so you don't go through the intersection.
Does it keep the snow from making contact to the roads to get it up? That's, people ask that, so what is the?
It'll, depending on the temperature. If it gets cold, yeah, but if you don't salt it, then it will turn to snow.
Because I know then they come by and plow it, and they plow that salt off.
The next day.
But that keeps the snow from sticking. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it melts.
That's just, is there a reason?
Residential area or?
It wasn't part of my house, I was just watching.
Well, that's why.
It's nothing bad, I just want to explain to people, well, you saw them salt in the road, it's two inches of snow on it.
We did it pretty well. We plowed that away, we solved it.
Okay, so it keeps it from sticking. Yeah, and and that's, that's fine. I just was looking for an explanation of why. And so when people ask, well, this is why, Dean says it works better, and that's what I'm gonna say. So there.
So it'll keep the snow from sticking.
Okay, that, and that's fine. That's, I just, so I can explain when people ask that question. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, because I'm not a snoring move guy, I just.
Usually use a lot of sand, too, but I'm trying to get away from the sand. All that is an issue, just a mess, but. So a lot of people go, why ain't you saying? Well, we ought to put your salt down, and it's doing the same thing as sand, only it is it's melting the snow and leaving a wet spot. But it does, it does help a lot.
Okay, then that's, we have the answer, so I have the answer when Russ asks me. You threw me under the bus a while ago, what a hockey.
It was only in front of your house that they salted it.
That could be, and thank you. Thank you for taking care of me.
We know how you drive. Jeez, look what happened in Lamberton.
They do not salt it. I'm off my soapbox.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I had, I too got the letter from Mr. Taylor, but and so that's been addressed. The other question I have, and I'm gonna bring up that lovely word of ordinances again. Do I'm gonna bring up ordinance? Do we have anything on the books for, I mean, I know we have for junk ordinances on residential park, how about bad homes like this? Is there anything on the books for ordinances on that?
There's, there's some things, and and some of the things that are addressed on the home that was in question are things like broken windows or.
So so there's another situation, we have an ordinance on the books, but in in this case, we can't do anything, or or what can we do? We have a, we have a complaint.
And we we addressed it a year ago, and it was not taken care of in a timely fashion. We addressed it again recently. So the property owner has until the end of next week to get in touch with the city proper officials to take care of it. If not, then, yeah, then we have to enforce it under the housing code.
And I would assume that this probably isn't the only house in Marshall that's this way. I mean, we probably have, God forbid, a few others, but, I mean, we do have something on the books that addresses it, and that's, I'm happy to hear, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
John?
I'd just say there's at least two more homes or houses in that same vicinity that are in pretty much the same shape, in same condition, sitting there, empty and been empty for quite a few years.
Across the street.
Across the street, one just down the street, about two more houses. So the one item I wanted to bring up, and I realize it is late, but want to bring it up, kind of stems off the discussion we had last meeting that Jim and Russ brought up as well, talking about the employees, and we had a little discussion already tonight on it, you know, are we gonna get the employees, things like that? You know, we passed a budget. You know, it's gonna be tight. We're looking at negotiations for unions coming up this next year. We've got, you know, potential for some inflation. Kind of all that, along with reading up on Little Falls, did a, probably more than what I'm thinking, did a retreat with their city council and their city staff to kind of go through and do some discussion and planning on it. And but what I'm thinking is, I would like to see us take part of a day probably for Sharon, city council, to have a discussion and and make sure that we are all, I would say, on the same page, go in the same direction, and really some aligned thinking on the projects and how we're going to handle this next year. And then as well for our city staff, probably Sharon, definitely direct staff, and I guess I would say for whatever you need after that, but to take some time as well in probably not the same meeting, but in a separate meeting that would also get a chance to do the discussion. And I'm not up on all these meetings, which timing would be best to do one versus the other one. I'd probably suggest getting some help brought in, so we're not tying up a staff member to try and facilitate this thing, but to just spend a few hours making sure that we're all together and aligned in our thinking, the staff is aligned in the same kind of thinking, and we're hearing what basically needs to be done and to get going on it. We're gonna be starting a new year in a couple of weeks, and, you know, let's start it off right, because I think we get, as we were talking last time, we got a lot of challenges coming up this next year. We don't know, we take a look at what some of the inflation numbers are projected out there, hopefully at short term, but don't know. You mentioned the budget is tight, and that says the budget is tight, means the budget is tight.
Means the budget's tight.
So we've got, you know, a lot of things like that that we need to do, and I'd like to make sure we're all pulling in the same direction on the same team. So I just bring that up as a suggestion, so.
Okay. From my part, why don't I just follow up on that? You know, it's probably been a few years since we've done a a kind of a work session type retreat, both from the council as well as our leadership staff. In addition to challenges, we have a number of things, like implementation of some of the action steps on the strategic plan that we've adopted. There's, we all know there's a lot of things going on, and it would probably benefit, you know, our staff if they were, had some, some direction on what the council's priorities are and and vice versa, that the council receives input from the staff about what's realistic, too. So, you know, spending some time in a planning session probably is a good idea. So let's give that some thought. We have, we have a bit of time here, but sometime early, and 2022 might be a good opportunity to carve out some time to do that.
We can get one of the sponsors at the Red Baron and let us use one of their days. I don't have to rent it. Retreat at the Red Baron.
I don't think we have to rent it. We can just pick and open it. I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we know how to.
That was coming from that. The.
I'm just trying to save money, Greg. Me, too.
The other thing I would add is, on a completely different subject, you know, we've had a number of, Sharon and I've had a number of conversations with, as well as Lauren Deitz, with some economic development interests. We had a conversation earlier this week with the president of one of the major industries in the, that's operating in the community about what their kind of future direction would be. That was a positive discussion. And we also had a conversation with the Minnesota Commissioner of Economic Development, Steve Groves, where we specifically talked about some of the challenges that we face because of our geographic location and proximity to South Dakota and and really communicated the message that while the state is is doing well, and the region is doing, doing okay, we do have challenges here because of our proximity, and the state really needs to recognize that. And maybe that would mean that our region should have some economic development tools that are somewhat different than in other parts of the state that don't have these challenges. So we went into some specific recommendations. And prior to that, our Southwest Minnesota Mayor's group, representing Marshall, Worthington, Pipestone, and Laverne, we had a a conversation, and some of those same thoughts are supported by by those those communities, leaders in those communities. And one example of that would be efforts to retain young people in our region. Currently, there is a program in the neighboring state that does a tuition forgiveness for students that are in a community or technical college or studying a trade if they agree to stay in that, in that state for several years after they complete that education. That is hurting our technical colleges here. And, you know, a a counter to that, a comparable program to that in Minnesota would be helpful in retaining our young people. So that was one of the examples we talked about. So with that, I'll stop. We could go into much more detail, but why don't I stop and I'll move us along then to our staff reports, Sharon?
You know, you mentioned the strategic plan. I did hand out an update when my performance evaluation was conducted. It was on paper. There wasn't much discussion, so, you know, I think coming back to that and having a discussion, we did accomplish some things that were in that strategic plan. It was a five-year plan. And I think we're two years into it. So that would be helpful, I think, to have that discussion. I do think the the council staff, you know, direction, same page. I think it's the best it's ever been since I've been here, and I know I've only been here for four years, but I think we have a really good relationship, and we do count to four on quite a few occasions, and we don't want to do something that the council doesn't want to do, so. But, you know, to kind of look long range, I think, is what you're kind of thinking about, so. And I do want to also comment just about, you know, a work session. I don't know the exact timing, but we will have a closed work session on comparable worth and union negotiations, and we're gonna talk strategy and what you can and cannot do, and we'll have our labor attorney present. And, you know, I don't know how long that would be, but that is one discussion that that we'll definitely. that we're definitely going to include the council in and, and make sure we're on the same page. And then I'll just briefly mention, a lot of talk about liquor license fees, and I know that councilmember Luzinski was asked quite a few times not too long ago about liquor license fees, and I think for the establishments, they just see the one side of it, but there's a whole nother other side called regulation in the state of Minnesota and the whole history of liquor control in the state. And what I shared with Jim was a lengthy response on why we have liquor license fees. It actually protects them as an establishment. It isn't just paying the city, it protects them. If, if we didn't have liquor control and licensing, it would be controlled by very few distributors who would likely take a majority, if not all, of the profits. So to have our small establishments, local owners, is really a result of liquor license fees. And I can certainly share, I think I just shared it with Jim, was in the newspaper too, but just kind of share the background on that. And, you know, one of the other comments sometimes we get to is, why are we in the liquor store business? Well, there's a lot of history to that too, and, and, you know, there's a really good purpose in 1933, I believe, or '35, and there's still a good purpose today. And just kind of reflecting back and, and kind of looking at the history really explains why we are here today. And, you know, not to go on, on the liquor store, but, you know, it isn't simply looking at net income on a given year and say, well, that's, you know, that's the value of this. We'd have to do an intensive study on the business value, not only of the property and the building, but future revenue growth and, and what really would be the sale price on it. And I'll, I'll add, you know, I'm not that familiar with liquor stores, but, you know, I went to school in Mankato. The liquor store that they had in Mankato is still there, there's no improvements to the property. I don't know what kind of reinvestment or donation that liquor store has made back to the community. And so we, we like to think private businesses is the way to go on everything, but I don't, I don't think so, not on, not on the way we've been performing in the liquor store and the history of it. So, anyway, just want to talk about liquor license fees. In fact, the one establishment owner starts off his conversation with me, I'm not going to talk about liquor license fees, because I kind of answered him on it, but I'll share that with the rest of the council as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jason?
Just give you a quick update on the comprehensive plan process. The task force and consultant have put together a community survey, so there's questions prepared and ready to go for that. I can share that with you at any time if you'd like. It's, it's going to be released on December 20th, and it'll be open through January 17th, so we'll start to promote that survey pretty soon. We use things like city social media, city press release, we'll have everybody in the task force email everybody they can through work and home. We use billboards, the electronic billboards up at the highways, chamber newsletter, a bunch of different things to try to get the word out, and we would ask that the council help us do the same. Then just a quick reminder that it's snow removal season, so respect the plows, give them space, and stay back.
Very good. Dennis?
I don't have anything else, is he?
Okay, before we move on, the, our next regular meeting is scheduled for December 28th. I know that there's some that may be gone on vacation. I want to be sure we have a quorum, so.
I'll be gone.
You'll be gone.
Unless there's a snowstorm, I'll be here. I fly out Wednesday morning, so.
Connect remotely if that's desired. I'm not a big believer in that, but if it's necessary and appropriate, I could connect.
You can do that, I did it, I did it earlier, as long as you're in a public place, and I can connect remotely in a public place.
We'd go somewhere and sit.
Yeah, I sat in the lobby of the hotel when I did it, nobody bothered me. They look at you funny, it's like you're talking to.
A steakhouse or something.
See, I had a sign and everybody held in the back.
Actually, it's supposed to be signed that it is a public meeting.
Well, then I'll put a sign up.
Boys are kidding, it was actually required, some of them have signed.
Yeah, I should, I should be here unless there's a snowstorm, because we fly out Wednesday morning.
Okay, very good. Kyle, maybe we'll follow up on, on that, just to be sure. You know, we, we took care of a lot of business tonight, we may not have that follow-up agenda.
I don't know of anything, I don't think.
We would want to get that sales tax thing through sooner than later though, wouldn't we?
We could take it in January, and, I mean, maybe we, do you want to meet? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I, I could go next week, but I just can't go the week after.
I could go next week.
I won't have sales tax resolution ready by then, but.
What if we don't go on Tuesday? What if we go on like Thursday night?
I won't be here Thursday night, but you can go Thursday night.
So next Tuesday is December 21st, are people available?
Can be.
Staff-wise, is that too short of a notice? That would be our last meeting till the end of the year, would that?
I know we have a few items, but I can't think of what they are off the top of my head, how important they are to get them in in a hurry, but.
So let, let me turn this back to staff discussion, you know, tomorrow, you can kind of see, would it work on the 21st? And if, know that if it doesn't, because of preparing agenda topics and year-end things, that we could go the following on our regular date, but know that there would be only four of the council members that would be in physical attendance.
Boy, you want to bring something big to that meeting and really sugarcoat us.
Okay. With that, the remaining items on the agenda, you see the administrative briefs, the information items, the upcoming meetings, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
By Craig? Seconded by Jim. To adjourn discussion, we'll move to a vote. Actually, let's go by, by voice vote. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.